Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to our pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you've taken time this evening to join us. We're very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. We'll begin this evening, as we always do, with our pledges to the American flag, Texas flag, and a moment of silence. And we have four fantastic students, two from A&amp;M Consolidated High School and two from College Station High School, who will be leading us. Saying if you guys would introduce yourself to the group.
My name is Emily Garrett, and I'm a junior at A&amp;M Consolidated High School, and I am the junior class president.
Hi, my name is Ellie Garrett, and I'm a freshman at A&amp;M Consolidated High School.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nibha Akram. I am a senior at College Station High School, and I'm the treasurer for student council.
Hi, my name is Ben Hannick, and I'm a committee head at College Station High School. I'm a junior.
If everyone could please rise as we say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Please remain standing for the moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated.
It's a great honor. This is one of our biggest meetings of the year. It's great to see our folks with the red coats from Skills USA. We've got Business Professionals of America. We've got HOSA, FCC LA. A lot of great things are going on at the district level, and we're seeing a lot of state and national recognition that we get to honor tonight. We will begin with the Skills USA state champions. Students from A&amp;M Consolidated High School and College Station High School recently combined to win 11 state championships in individual and team events at the Texas Skills USA contest. Students participated in four days of leadership and hands-on skilled competitions with and against more than 8,500 other attendees. The following students will advance to the National Skills USA Skills and Leadership Conference in Louisville, Kentucky in June. Our first team, our first ones coming up tonight are 3D imaging and animation team. First is Brandon Becker. From additive manufacturing, 3D printing, we have Jordan Gant and Jedediah Romo. Advertising design, Erica Branham. Career pathways showcase in information technology, Ellen Lee. In action skills, Spencer Williamson. Prepared speech and a state officer, Delphine Jomo. All right, the next group is Quiz Bowl. He's here, Jeremy Holling. Richard Yu. Luke Hoffman. And Rio Matsuda. Related technical mathematics, Brandon Zo. Technical computer applications, Alex Cantrell. Models of excellence representative, Alexis Girard. State Officer Kelly Krennic. TV production, Jordan Bratcher. And we also have the coaches who get to come up here and shake hands and walk through the line as well. Don't know who all's here. Bart Taylor. Didn't see Bart. Barbara Klein. Will Conlon. Jason Waleen. Next, we're moving to HOSA. A&amp;M Consolidated High School student Janesa Sarapeta recently placed first in extemporaneous health poster event at the state HOSA Future Health Professionals Contest in Galveston. The prompt for the poster was "Heart Age," and the competitors had three hours of work time to complete the poster. By winning the contest, Sarapeta advanced to compete in the National HOSA Event Contest in Nashville, Tennessee in June. Our HOSA state champion in extemporaneous health poster is Janesa Sarapeta. And her coach is Dr. Michelle O'Quinn. Moving on to FCC LA National Qualifier. College Station High School's Samantha Scary won the Interior Design Star Event at the annual Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America, or FCC LA, state contest and advanced to the national contest, which will be held this summer in San Diego. So we've got Louisville, Nashville, and San Diego already. FCC LA contests include culinary competitions, students taking action and recognition events, and family and consumer science assessments. Moving on to Business Professionals of America National Qualifiers. Five students from A&amp;M Consolidated High School and College Station High School recently advanced to the National Business Professionals of America National Leadership Conference. The students earned the trip to the national conference in Boston in May by placing at the state contest in Corpus Christi. BPA National Qualifiers are, in payroll accounting, Victoria Evans. Fundamentals of Web Design, Katie Gray. Java programming, Yusha Sun. Banking and finance, Judy Zo. We have art awards this evening, and we have two to hand out. Recently, AMC HS artist Rita Santosa's artwork was selected as one of the Governor's Ten. This is a special group of art that is handpicked by Mrs. Abbott, the First Lady of Texas, from a larger set of artwork displayed at the state Capitol as part of Youth Art Month. Rita will be honored at a reception in Austin this summer. So our YAM exhibit Governor's Ten Award winner is Rita Santosa. A&amp;M Consolidated High School student Esther Araho. Her art piece titled "Rhythmic Stance" was chosen as this year's Congressional Art Award winner. This piece will hang in the U.S. Capitol for a year. In addition, Araho will receive a $3,000 scholarship to the Savannah College of Art and Design and two round-trip tickets to Washington, D.C. Our Congressional Art Award winner is Esther Araho. And the teacher for both of those students is Jamie Beavens. Noran Riaz of A&amp;M Consolidated High School's Business Professionals of America was recently named a national winner of the Presidential Volunteer Service Award. One of seven BPA students nationally to receive the award, Riaz was presented a Presidential Volunteer Service Award pin, a certificate of achievement, and a congratulatory letter signed by the President of the United States at the 2016 Business Professionals of America National Leadership Conference in Boston. The President's Volunteer Service Award recognizes individuals, families, and groups that have achieved a certain standard and measure, is measured by the number of hours of service over a 12-month period or cumulative hours earned over the course of a lifetime. Riaz completed 254 hours of volunteer work through teaching at her Sunday School, assisting at the Larry J. Ringer Library Summer Program, and other volunteer opportunities completed through extracurricular activities, including student council interact post and BPA. As you can see, we've got a lot of students doing great things. We also have some staff members who have some notable accomplishments, and we get to recognize those this evening as well. Three of our central office personnel recently completed the requirements to earn Certified Texas School Business Certifications. These certifications increase the credibility in the education community. They ensure that these individuals have the most current information and tools to do their job and offers a competitive edge in the job market, although we don't want them to go. Certified individuals must earn 60 hours of continuing education every three years to maintain their certification. Our first honorary tonight is Sherri Combs. She earned her Certified Texas School Business Official Certification. Next, we have Ginger Kubicek, who earned the Certified Texas School Business Official Finally, we have Cheryl Wilford, who earned her Certified Texas School Business Official Dr. Yoken, members of the board, that concludes our recognitions for the evening.
Thank you for those of you that came and joined us this evening. We appreciate it. And we understand that you have other places to go, so thank you for coming. While we're waiting for the group to leave, I want to go ahead and recognize the artwork that we have displayed in tonight for the board meeting. We talked, heard about some of the wonderful artwork that's being done at the high school, and obviously those students have achieved quite a bit, but they need, they probably started at one of our other schools. The artwork tonight that's displayed is from College Station Middle School, A&amp;M Consolidated High School, as well as College Station High School. Why don't we go ahead and look at item D, Consent Agenda? The items that are on the consent agenda are G, H1, J2, J3, J4, J5, J6, J7, J8, J9, and J10. Does anybody have anything that they would like to pull off of the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
I will second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? So the motion carries 7-0. We'll move to item E, Board Reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share with the group?
Just real quick, tomorrow night with the Education Foundation, it is their scholarship banquet, and they will be awarding over $48,000 in scholarships to students.
That's at the Transportation Center? Thank you. 6:00 PM. Anything else? All right, well, we'll move to Dr. Ely Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken, members of the board. I have a few things I'd like to highlight for the board and the community this evening. First, I'd like to start off and talk, talking about how College Station ISD partners with the community. CSISD partners with three local charities that we work with on an annual basis. Those are the Brazos Valley Food Bank, United Way, and the one we're going to talk about tonight, which is Relay for Life. Last weekend, the Relay for Life was held at the Expo Center, and we had a number of, we had all of our College Station ISD campuses and many, many of our staff members participate in that event, which started at 7:00 in the evening and concluded at 7:00 in the morning. It's our pleasure to be able to work with the folks from Relay for Life. They're great to work with, specifically Jeannie Bassett. Jeannie's a former teacher in College Station ISD. She's a cancer survivor. She's also Jamie's wife, which is, I guess, her cross to bear. I'm sorry, Jamie. Jeannie really asked to be on the agenda tonight to kind of talk to us about the experience. She was out of town, but she did send Jamie here this evening, and also Shannon Chesson with the American Cancer Society. So they would like to come and visit with you and bring greetings. So if you'd come on up here.
Thank you, board, for giving us just a couple of minutes. Like I say, you get the worst half of the family, but Jeannie's out partying in New Mexico right now, so she sends her regards to you. In 2004, CSISD started their support of Relay for Life. Jeannie has been organizing that almost that whole time, and since then, we have been walking in honor, memory, and support of faculty, staff, students, and families of CSISD. This last year, Jeannie distributed 47 gift bags and invitations to Relay. This was, this was just district people that either have cancer or have survived cancer. And as a matter of fact, we found out the day of Relay of the latest cancer person in the district. So it's, this is an ongoing, an ongoing push. Eighteen of the campuses and offices of the CSISD raised money for Relay for Life this year. Eleven campuses and kids' club had teams that were actually out walking at Relay this year. And of the 10 highest, of the 10 largest money-raising teams in the Relay, five of those are CSISD teams. And I think Stephanie Chesson just updated me. As of, as of right now, we have raised this year just over $30,000. And I, I don't know, have a total figure, but I know it's well over $200,000 that CSISD has raised for Relay in its, in its time. And I've got Stephanie Chesson here, who's with the High Plains Division of the American Cancer Society.
I just wanted to say on behalf of the American Cancer Society and our local office here in Bryan, thank you all so much for the support. I can't say how much it means to us, you guys. Like Jamie said, you've raised over $30,000 just this year, and that's about a third of what is raised for our total event. So your support is critical to the success of our event and able to, you know, what we're able to provide research-wise and services and programs to local patients. So I thank you so much and hope that we can continue the partnership. And I do have a little thank you that y'all can display as well, so thanks.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
I just want to say thank you to the both of you for what you do to help try to eradicate cancer. As I look across the room, the real people to thank are sitting out in the audience. I see principals and assistant principals who worked with their staffs to, on a daily basis, to help, help raise funds and do things to embarrass themselves and all sorts of untold things to raise money for American Cancer Society and Relay for Life, and we appreciate all that you do, principals and assistant principals. Do you want to talk about some upcoming events? We have our employee awards ceremony. We'll be honoring our auxiliary, classified, paraprofessional, and elementary and secondary teachers of the year, and that will be day after tomorrow. That's Thursday at 7:00 PM at Grace Bible Church Southwood. That's the one just right over there on the other side of Consaul. We'll begin promptly at 7:00 PM. This year, it's not in conjunction with the board meeting, so we'll have time to sit and relax and talk and visit and maybe even meet some family members. We will also have our retirees who will be honored that evening. We have Timber Academy High School graduation, which will be Thursday, May the 26th, at 7:00 PM at Christ United Methodist Church. It would be, it will be followed the next day by a doubleheader at Reed Arena for our two comprehensive high schools. College Station High School graduation is the matinee starting at 4:00 PM, and Consaul will begin after that at 7:00 PM. We have celebrated some employee success earlier, but I want to highlight a couple of other folks in our midst this evening who have some awards that have come their way. First is the Region 6 Middle School Principal of the Year, and his name is Oliver Hadnott. And we had a campus leader in CSISD chosen to be a part of Harvard Graduate School of Education's principal center, and that's Stormy Hickman. The last thing I want to visit about briefly is where we ended up with the law, with the Texas school funding lawsuit that was ruled upon last Friday, coincidentally, Friday the 13th. Public schools in Texas have been suing the state government since the late 80s, and at every turn, this is the seventh time in the previous six iterations, cases that have gone before the Texas Supreme Court, each time one portion or more of the Texas state funding system was found unconstitutional. This time, none was, which is really unprecedented. Over 600 of the nearly 1,030 districts in the state of Texas were involved in one or more in one of the suits, and there were about five on the network combined. It was unprecedented when it was at the trial court, because the trial court found the, the funding system unconstitutional in four areas, and the Supreme Court found it in none. This ends the latest chapter in school finance litigation, and it won't get picked up for a while. We will be living with the, with the money that we have under the current funding system and moving forward. Fortunately, we and our folks in our business office and our leaders have been planning for this eventual, this possibility, and so we will make sure that we can open the schools that we need to and continue to welcome people to the community that we need to. But it is troubling for us as a state. When the state ruled in West Orange Cove in 2006, they said it was okay. It was equitable to have to have some districts receive a little under $4,000 per student, while other districts received $11,000 per student. They said that was comparable. We disagreed, and that was part of the lawsuit. Since the 2006 West Orange Cove case, state has radically reduced funding in the state of Texas, cutting $5.4 billion from education during the 2010-2012 biennium alone. While adding some back, the, obviously, the, the people involved in the lawsuit, including us, felt that the funding was not adequate to meet the increased high-stakes testing and accountability systems that have come in the state of Texas. It was also found at the trial court to be a statewide property tax, but the Texas Supreme Court did not agree, because not all districts were taxing at the $1.17 tax, in which is really disadvantageous for some, for a school district like College Station ISD, who would have to give half that money back to the state. So, it's a little tedious, and I apologize for that, but it is, it is noteworthy for our community to understand where we are in this. We expected to prevail as a, as an administration. I think our lawyers expected to prevail. And what is interesting to me is Congress, the Texas Legislature, expected to prevail as well. They set aside millions, billions of dollars that was unallocated during the last legislative session to address school finance when it came up. So, we, we will be working with like-minded districts to implore the Texas Legislature to continue to look at Texas school funding, to look at the adequacy of funding for all of the 5.2 million children in Texas, to look at the equity of funding among the various 1,030 school districts in Texas, and hopefully, they will be able to continue to address the funding issues in the state of Texas as they go through, and especially in this 2017 legislative session. And on that less-than-high note, Dr. Yoken, that concludes my report.
I guess I say thank you. We'll move on to E2, and be a little bit more upbeat, and talk about the consideration discussion and possible action related to naming the third intermediate school in CSISD. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken, this is a much happier item. We have been banding about different names for our third intermediate school, which is going to, which is in the process of being built. If you haven't been by on Greens Prairie Trail, there is a hub of activity going on right next to Greens Prairie Elementary. It has been our custom in College Station to name our intermediate schools Oakwood and Cypress Grove after some sort of a tree, we looked at tree names, and to use some sort of a land form in the, in the second part. Wood's not necessarily one, but Grove is, and all of our elementary schools have some sort of land form there. Well, our recommendation will be to name intermediate school number three, Pecan Trail. Pecan is the Texas state tree, and trail because it sits on Greens Prairie Trail. And so, I would recommend to the Board of Trustees to name the school Pecan Trail Intermediate School. I'd love to answer any questions you may have.
I guess my only question would be, what are we going to do when people are not from Texas and they say it's pecan trail? But that, that, having not been raised in Texas myself, I have had that problem, so that would be my only comment.
It's an opportunity for education.
Does anybody else have anything else they'd like to add?
Well, while I would like to get into potential mascot names, the nuts jumped up to me, but and other names for the school, like maybe Mesquite Trail, I will move that we name the next intermediate school Pecan Trail.
I second.
Does anybody have any other discussion they'd like to add? This is much more fun than school finance. All those in favor of the motion on the table, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I'm having trouble here, but I went with it, okay? 7-0. But we're going to have to work on the educational part. Do we have any citizens, Ms. Horn? Thank you. Let's move to Item. I want, consider approval of the new administrator contract that is recommended by the superintendent of schools. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. With the Pecan Trail Intermediate School opening, and the opportunity to move Kelly DeGeer into the principalship of Pecan Trail, a position was open at Cypress Grove Intermediate School for Principal. We went through a long process, had the, opened this position to people inside and outside the district, had 48 people apply, and interviewed three people for the position. It is my, we found the person that we want, and she was right here in our midst. She has not been here long. Her name is Holly Scott. Holly is the current Assistant Principal at A&amp;M Consolidated Middle School. Prior to her stint at AMC MS, she was a longtime administrator in Bryan ISD, serving over a decade as a principal at two elementary campuses in BISD. She's been a district math coordinator, and she's done a number of things as well. So, it would be my recommendation to name Holly Scott, Principal of Cypress Grove Intermediate School.
Thank you. Any discussion? Do we have a motion?
I move approval as presented.
Any other comments? It's a contest. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So the motion carries 7-0. Thank you.
Holly is here today, would Holly stand up? Congratulations to our new principal at Cypress Grove.
Okay, we'll move on to Item J1, Consider Approval of the Request for Competitive Sealed Proposals for Video Display Systems to Avanex in the Amount of $52,629 for College View High School and DAEP to be purchased from the 2013 bond funds. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Dr. Yoken. We obviously have College View High School and the DAEP. If you've driven down George Bush Drive, you can see that making tremendous amount of progress now, and looking forward to being able to be in the building this summer. We are in the process of outfitting what that campus needs to move forward. Part of that is video display systems, and so what we have before you is a response to competitive proposal for video display systems from Avanex, and with more information on that is Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Dr. Ely, Dr. Yoken. As part of the 2013 bond program, requests for competitive sealed proposals to furnish and install video display systems at College View High School and DAEP were mailed to 14 different vendors on April the 14th, advertised in our local newspaper on April 14th and April 21st, and posted on the College Station ISD website. A pre-proposal meeting was held on April 22nd, and seven vendors responded to our request for competitive sealed proposals. Staff from our technology department and purchasing departments evaluated and scored all submitted proposals. Avanex received the high score as per the attached evaluation matrix. Included in Avanex's proposal was a five-year warranty, movable mounts for monitors, and two of the DAEP classrooms, and surge protectors for all classrooms. Pending questions from the board, it is administration's recommendation that the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees accept the base proposal from Avanex to furnish and install video display systems at College View High School and DAEP for the amount of $52,629 to be paid from, from 2013 bond funds.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'm going to abstain from discussion and voting on this matter.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept the base proposal from Avanex to furnish and install video display systems at College View High School.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Discussion? All those in favor the motion is presented, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So the motion carries six with one abstention. We'll move to Item L, the board will meet in executive session in, did I miss that?
Nope.
The way you said, okay. To conduct a closed meeting to deliberate the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property because the deliberation in open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the position of the district in negotiations with a third party. Executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the deliberations regarding real property, closed meeting exception, to the Texas Open Meetings Act is set forth in Section 551.0742 of the Texas Government Code. Once we have finished that, we will come back into open session, but the government students are free to leave. Thank you all for coming.